It is six o'clock, so we're going to get started. The public hearing on the proposed budget and truth in taxation are called to order. Well, it's secretary, please note that all board members are present with the exception of board member Cross. Please note that today's hearings and special meeting are being live streamed. Additionally, Spanish interpreting services are available in the back of the room.
Si necesita intérprete en español, favor de mirar a nuestro intérprete que se encuentra a un lado del cuarto. Gracias.
Item two A, public hearings on the 2025-2026 proposed budget and truth in taxation. Dr. Adrian De Alba, executive director of finance will provide a brief presentation. We will open the floor for public comment immediately after this presentation. Dr. De Alba.
Thank you, President Napa, Clerk Oliver, governing board, superintendent Andrade, and community. Tonight we'll hold two public hearings. The first hearing is for the 2025-26 proposed budget, and the second hearing is for the 25-26 truth and taxation notification. Prior to each hearing, I will provide a very brief review of the highlights of the 2025-26 proposed budget and truth and taxation notification. Before I begin, I would like to update the board on the state budget, which is currently in the Senate and has not been finalized as of last night. Additionally, Prop 123 remains unresolved despite two distinct versions circulating the House. As a reminder, the proposed expenditure budget is based on projected ADM using state level reporting on average daily membership for the first 100 days of the fiscal year. Over the last three years, the district's enrollment decreased by about 1,700 students. The proposed expenditure budget is based on the ADM of 25,516 students. The district's ADM is expected to continue to decline over the next three to five years. Overall, the Teacher Experience Index, or TEI, which is similar to a score based on how many teachers have been teaching in the district for a certain amount of time, has slightly decreased over the last few years. All of these factors together result in a smaller budget than in previous years, a total MNO budget of $389 million. Overall, the total MNO budget for the next fiscal year is about $389 million, which includes a desegregation budget of $55 million. This is about a $7 million budget reduction from this year's revised budget. As you can see from the pie chart, the majority of the budgeted expenditures consist of salaries and benefits, which is about 87%, followed by purchase services making up 8% and utilities consisting of 4%. As a reminder, the proposed expenditure budget also includes the IBN negotiated salaries approved by the board, resulting in a 1% increase to the base of all salary schedules and a one-step increase for staff who qualify. In addition, the salaries include a tier down of one-time retention and new hire stipend to $2,000 for full-time and $1,000 for part-time employees who qualify. Next year's new teacher salary increased to $53,530. Thirty-eight percent of district expenditures consist of academic achievement and instructional services, followed by student support services and facilities and operations at 11% each. You may notice that the contingency budget amount is about 20%. This may seem large, but I would like to remind the board and community that the contingency consists of one-time fund balances that will be used to tier down over the next three years strategically. These one-time fund reserves are not recurring, and once used, they will no longer be available. Overall, the budget, the district budgets, about 49% for academic achievement and student services combined. As a reminder, the desegregation budget remains static regardless of enrollment and is about $55 million. The desegregation budget is embedded into the MNO budget and is primarily used to fund schools Caesar Chavez, North, and Fairfax. The portion represented in black is the district-wide allocation, which is sprinkled throughout district schools, funding salaries and benefits. Now we will start the public hearing for the proposed budget. Are there any questions or comments from the public or the board related to the 2025 proposed expenditure budget?
It does not look like there are any questions from the public or any comments from the public.
Thank you, President Napa, Clerk Oliver, governing board and community. The truth and taxation notification is included in the 2025-26 expenditure budget and is required for the district because the district will continue to levy about $3.5 million for adjacent ways. Adjacent ways funding is used to pay for expenditures such as sidewalks, roads, and utilities and parking lots. The district will be using adjacent ways funding for projects such as Metro Tech and Trevor Brown, to name a few. As a reminder, the district relies on local taxes to fund MNO and capital overrides, adjacent ways dropout prevention, desegregation, and bond budgets. Over the last five years, Phoenix Union has maintained a pretty consistent tax rate. The projected tax rate for next year is about $4.29, which consists of a primary tax rate of $1.74. One of the components of the primary tax rate is adjacent ways, the secondary tax rate of about $2.56. A consistent tax rate is important because it provides fiscal predictability for taxpayers and stability for district budgets. The steady decline in our tax rate is directly related to the robust growth in our district's assessed value. This slide provides a summary of the components of the primary and secondary tax rates. The primary tax rate includes adjacent ways and dropout prevention, which is the focus of the truth and taxation notification. The secondary tax rate includes bonds, overrides, and desegregation, all of which is determined by the county. As a reminder, Maricopa County determines how much tax rate is needed for the school district. In addition to state and federal funding, local taxes are the mechanism developed by our state legislator to fund schools. According to ARS 15-90401B, this requires that in each fiscal year in which a school district governing board levies an amount for adjacent ways, a public hearing must be held. Adjacent ways funds are restricted for use for typically land improvements in the right-of-way areas adjacent to a school site. An example of this would be bringing water and power services through a right-of-way to the school site. Now we will start the public hearing for truth and taxation notification. Are there any questions or comments from the public or board regarding the 2025-26 truth and taxation notification?
Does not appear there are any questions or comments about that. Thank you. So 3A, adjournment of the public hearings. Is there a motion to adjourn the public hearings?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to adjourn has been made by Representative Marquez and seconded by Clerk Oliver. On the motion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Now we go to the special meeting, which is now called to order. Will the secretary please note that all board members are present with the exception of board member Cross? The first item on the agenda is 1C, Pledge of Allegiance. We will stand as Representative Marquez leads us in the pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing while a moment of silence is observed.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. You may be seated. Item 1D, land acknowledgement statement. Please remain seated as board member Pastor Rivera leads, reads the PXU land acknowledgement statement.
The Phoenix Union High School District is responsible for and committed to creating educational environments that prioritize the achievements of Native American students. We are committed to making their cultural identity visible by acknowledging that our school district resides upon the ancestral lands of the original caretakers. The Huhu'gum, ancestors of the Akimaro-Atham, the Anq-Akimaro-Atham, Antanana-Atham, and Auction. These sovereign nations are presently known as Ahila River Indian Community, Salt River Pima-Maricopa Indian Community, Antanana-Atham Nation and Auction Indian Community. This formal acknowledgement is dedicated to the 22 sovereign nations of Arizona. Phoenix Union understands the importance of providing reparations through truth-telling. We recognize that the historical injustices not traditionally taught in the classroom and are committed to practices prioritizing Native American knowledge, history, representation, and healing. We commit with an open mind to always respect the land, its histories, and its ancestors.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2A, call to the public. The audio, we need the audio, please, in English and Spanish.
Si necesita intérprete en español, favor de mirar a nuestro intérprete que se encuentra a un lado del cuarto. Gracias.
I'll go ahead and read the English, but we're going to need the Spanish version, too. No. According to ARS 38-431.038, at the conclusion of the call to the public, members of the public body may respond to criticism made by those who address the public body, may ask the staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. I would like to caution members of the audience about commenting on a particular individual, and thank you for not referring to any person by name. In order to avoid any concerns with interpretation services, please be aware of the following: We have a Spanish interpreter available to join you at the podium while you address the governing board. Only the PXU-assigned interpreter will provide interpretation services. If you have a script on paper or on a device, we ask that you make it available for the interpreter. In order to provide accurate interpreting, we ask that you speak for approximately two to three sentences at a time and pause for interpreting. You will be given double the amount of time to address the governing board as a result. As usual, we ask that you end your comments when your official time allotment has ended. Spanish, please.
According to ARS 38-431, commenting on a particular individual, and thank you for not referring to any person by name. In order to avoid any concerns with interpretation services, please be aware of the following: On paper or on a device, we ask that you make it available for the interpreter. In order to provide accurate interpreting, we ask that you speak for approximately two to three sentences at a time and pause.
Ms. Fernandez, can you, in Spanish? Thank you.
Para evitar dificultades con los servicios de intérprete, favor de tener en cuenta lo siguiente. Tenemos un intérprete de español disponible para acompañarlo mientras se dirige a la mesa directiva. Solo el intérprete asignado por el distrito proveerá servicios de interpretación. I hate saying that word. Si tiene un mensaje en papel o electrónicamente, le pedimos que ponga la disposación, que lo ponga a disposación del intérprete. Para brindar una interpretación precisa, le pedimos que hable aproximadamente de dos o tres oraciones a la vez y haga una pausa para el intérprete. Como resultado, se le dará el doble de tiempo para dirigirse a la mesa directiva. Como de costumbre, le pedimos que finalice sus comentarios cuando termine su tiempo asignado.
So the presentations to call to public, presentations tonight are limited to a maximum of two minutes. Tonight, we did have the option for members of the public to participate in person and virtually. We have no registered speakers online, so we'll go to our speakers in person tonight. We will call on those who requested to speak in person. Please state your name, indicate the agenda item or topic you wish to speak about, and limit your presentation to two minutes. First person is Cheryl Rosato.
My name is Cheryl Rosato, and I came here because I would like to ask that we talk about SROs in the future. Sometimes you hear about on apps like Nextdoor or on social media, kids getting into fights and sort of issues that I think the officers on campus would greatly alleviate these kinds of problems, and it's not great to hear about it on social media. Do I stop for interpretation?
Keep going.
Okay. So I would like to request that this is an issue that I think is really important. I brought some potential future Phoenix Union students with me tonight to see how this all goes and to let you know that, you know, while I might not have a student in high school yet, I'm looking, and if this is where God would have me send my children, I want to make sure that it's the safest, best place possible. And so thank you, guys, for all you do, and also I don't think you should vote yes on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other speakers. That concludes tonight's call to the public.
Thank you. The next item is 3A, approval of...
Madam President, if we may, I do would like to, I guess, comment or add here. Is there a way that we can address some of those issues, like in a future report regarding school safety, that would be available in a future discussion or meeting item, agenda item?
Ms. Fernandez.
It's appropriate for him to ask that now after the speaker's done, yes.
Okay. I would also say that that discussion, too, depending on what we are discussing, is reserved for e-session as well, so we can, like we do with all requests, we can put it on the agenda list to be considered.
Thank you.
Okay. 3A now, approval of consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented has been made by Clerk Oliver and seconded by board member Pastor Rivera. Is there any discussion? On the motion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item 6A, adoption of the 25-26 expenditure budget. Dr. De Alba.
President Napa, Clerk Oliver, governing board, the administration is recommending adoption of the 2025-26 proposed expenditure budget. Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt the 2025-26 expenditure budget?
So moved. Second.
A motion to adopt the 2025 expenditure budget has been made by board member Meyer and seconded by Representative Marquez. On the motion, those, is there any discussion?
Madam President, so just for clarification, so if I can understand correctly, this budget is increasing or decreasing compared to last year from last fiscal year?
Dr. De Alba.
It's decreasing due to a decline in enrollment.
Madam President, and also, will this budget be used as some of the basis for, I believe, the adjacent ways increase that we're asking for property and tax owners to, for the increase?
It's a continuation of adjacent ways.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? On the motion to adopt the 2025, oh, I already did that. On the motion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Call for division.
Excuse me?
Call for division.
Ms. Fernandez.
Or, yes.
You want a roll call vote?
Yes, please.
All right, then. Roll call vote. Board member Meyer.
Madam President, can I comment?
Sure.
I find it, I guess I'm wondering, I know we just had discussion, but I guess I'm wondering, like, if we vote no, like, what other option is there? Like, I guess I'm wondering, like, I don't know, that's just a thought I have, but I think it's, I think the district has done a good job at really presenting the data and really has done a good job at letting us know several board retreats, several months now, about like where we stand, has been very authentic in like the reality of decreasing enrollments. So then I really trust that they did their due diligence to make sure that, like, we're keeping in line, especially even having like our own budget committee, so I vote to approve.
Thank you. Board member Cota.
Madam President, may I explain my vote?
You may.
All right, thank you. So I generally, I would agree. I do always see that there are ways that we could be more efficient, that we could be more streamlined. I do think this budget could use additional work. I'm not saying it's not great, I'm just saying it could be better, but there are other ways that we can find out and be good stewards of resources of the tax dollars that are given to the school district. We owe it not only to our community, we owe it to the taxpayers, we owe it to the parents and kids in our district to make sure we're using our resources wisely and as efficiently as possible. So I will be voting no because I think we can have a better budget.
Pastor Rivera.
I vote yes.
Representative Marquez.
Aye.
Clerk Oliver.
I'd just like to say that I'll explain my vote. We did go into the community and we did have people knowledgeable of education make their recommendations. This board did its due diligence by asking for that, and so they did that, and so that's why I vote aye.
Thank you. And just to further those comments, the, what we've seen in the state of Arizona as far as education and the receivership that happened in the state and going forward with the, with the bills that went through state legislature regarding education funding and fiscal management, I just want to lift up how thoughtful and how appreciative I am to the Phoenix Union High School District Finance Department, the executive director of finance, and our, and Ms. Sherry. Salaya, thank you so much. We're definitely going to miss you when you retire, but fully, fully confident that this is the best budget that we have with the resources that we have and also lifting up that we could do more if we were funded at the level that we should be, and for that I vote yes. Next on my agenda is 6B, authorization for legal action. I would like a motion to convene an executive session for legal advice on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by myself and seconded by Representative Marquez. On the motion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move into executive session. Special meeting is called back to order. Will the Secretary please note that all board members are present with the exception of Board Member Cross and Representative Marquez? Let's take a little break because he was, he was here. We'll, we'll pause. For real now, we're gonna, the special meeting is called back to order. Will the President, will the Secretary please note that all board members are present with the exception of Board Member Cross? Is there a motion to adjourn the executive session?
I motion.
Second.
Motion to adjourn has been made by Board Member Pastor Rivera, seconded by Representative Marquez. On the motion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is to instruct the designative representatives of the public body regarding matters discussed in executive session as necessary. Is there a motion to affirm instructions given to representatives of the public body in executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion to, motion has been made by Representative Marquez and seconded by Clerk Oliver. Is there any discussion? Okay. On the motion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. 6B Authorization for Legal Action. Is there a motion to approve item 6B as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Representative Marquez and seconded by Board Member Pastor Rivera. Is there any discussion? On the motion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item is 7A, Adoption. Can we combine, is it 7A, B, C, D? Yeah, all those are adoption on second reading. Okay. So I have to make a motion, right? Yeah. I make a motion to combine items 7A, Adoption of Revised Governing Board Policy JLF, Reporting Child Abuse/Child Protection, on second reading. Item 7B, Adoption of Revised Governing Board Policy JR, Student Records, on second reading. Item 7C, Adoption of Revised Governing Board Policy JF, Student Admissions, on second reading. And 7D, Adoption of Revised Governing Board Policy JHD, Exclusions and Exemptions from School Attendance, on second reading. Is there?
Second.
Thank you. A motion has been made by myself and seconded by Clerk Oliver. Any discussion? Yes.
President Napa, I also have a question for the Superintendent. Actually, we're combining, we've taken a vote to combine them, correct?
Yes, that's, we can talk about them.
Well, you're still on your motion to combine?
Okay.
So you need to vote on that?
Uh huh.
And then you can make another motion to approve and go into discussion.
Okay, thank you. So that's the motion. On the, any further discussion, questions? On the motion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries, so we will go in, is there a motion to approve, right, as, as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Clerk Oliver, seconded by Representative Marquez. Is there any discussion?
Okay, now, President Napa, actually, I have a question for the Superintendent, and it's regarding the JR regulation, or specifically for the student records. So based on my understanding at least, the changes are the result of new legislation, correct?
Corrected.
All right, perfect. So with that in mind, currently, right now, Phoenix Union has pretty strong, tight directory information, protecting student information, right? Specifically when it comes to students' background, naming, class rank, et cetera, et cetera. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Perfect. Well, how specifically, as we move into the school year, specifically into August, one of the questions or at least concerns that I have as an educator myself, speaking to my students as a friend with, of, with many identities who are frightened right now during this time, how will we how will we notify parents regarding information that they can share about their children?
President Napa, and Member Pastor Rivera, there's a couple ways where we'll notify parents. First of all, the legislation requires that we notify parents in the first three weeks of the school year. And that is why this is important that we get this through on second read tonight, so we can, again, start the school year the right way with this. But typically, it would be ninety days after the legislative session, which would put us like kind of in the middle of the fall semester. With that said, two-part, we will be mailing a letter home to the parents outlining what is in the directory currently, their right to opt out, and then of course, the timeline of when they need to, and how they need to notify the school, if they so choose to opt out of being in the directory altogether. There's also a portion in the student handbook where they, they're gonna sign off and out, so there's multiple ways we're gonna communicate with our families.
Perfect. A follow-up question at least. What information is specifically shared within the directory, if you could specify that as well?
In the regulation, I believe it is their name, without authorization from like a college or a university, or an employment purposes. So those are asterished within the regulation, but outside of that, it is really not very much. Again, it's not their address, their telephone, their birth date, their email address is not. It is their name. I want to say their field of study. Any kind of officially recognized in activities or sports, et cetera. There's some AIA stuff, if they're on an athletic team, their height and their weight has to be shared. Honors and awards received. I, I want to say that, that's about it. There are other things, but again, those are, those are preserved directory information specifically for colleges, universities, where the parents are asking that we send that information.
Perfect. And just to be really specific at least, right, now I want to reiterate this point. The, the troubling times right now, right? Now I want to make sure we are not sharing any personal information beyond that, correct? Regarding, we're not sharing status of students or their families, et cetera, et cetera.
We do not, we do not ask or collect any type of immigration status information. I do think that there's one exception to that that I can think of. So part of our foreign exchange program, we have F1 students that come and they actually pay tuition from another country to attend Phoenix Union. We'll maybe have a group of students from China. And again, currently, I'd have to look how many there are, if there are any this year or coming up. We do have those records because it's part of the program, but aside from that, no, we do not collect information like that.
Superintendent, thank you for answering so many of my questions that I had. Like I said, the reason why I'm asking these questions, just a conversation with my constituents, again, these are frightening times, and so I think this would be a good time to perhaps revisit the resolution that we passed in January and to find other ways and means we can communicate to parents their specific rights regarding their students, communicating to students their specific rights as well. On campus, schools within this district should be a safe haven for learning. And that is why I was asking these specific questions. So if we're able to find different means in which we can reiterate to the parents of their rights, I would greatly appreciate that, and specifically also letting the students know that schools are safe for them.
We can include that as part of our letter home with this legislation.
Perfect. Thank you so very much.
Madam President, question here on this policy as well, and Superintendent, at any time, is there any point that information is collected of a student of their lawful status, immigration status, and is that collected in a database anywhere in the school district?
No.
Madam President, Superintendent, thank you. And also, would there be any, what is the agreement if, in accordance to this policy with the directory, if there's like a law enforcement agency that is requesting this information in any way, how, how does that go about?
Typically, they would have a bench warrant, I believe, to get that information, or subpoena.
Okay, thank you.
Madam President, Superintendent, but if we, we can't give them information, we don't collect, correct?
Correct.
All right.
Anything further? Okay. Board Member Pastor Rivera, I'm just wondering if you have any ideas on how to, how to notify parents, I mean, beyond what we already do. I mean, we already have forms, we do information sessions, we have been doing Know Your Rights sessions. Is there anything that you want to see that we aren't exactly doing?
I just wanted to make sure that we're continuing on that trajectory as well, making sure that parents know Phoenix Union is for them, that this school district is a safe space for them. And so I just want to continue in that trajectory, making sure that parents and students know their rights and feel safe within this area.
Thank you for that clarification. Anything further?
Madam President, Superintendent, in regards to Board Member Rivera, who actually is notified in this policy? It's the parent or the guardian, or who actually is and who's actually able to opt out on behalf of the student, their information?
I believe it's the legal guardians.
Okay. Thank you.
Are students allowed to, Ms. Fernandez, are, yeah, if, if I'm sixteen, am I able to opt out myself, or do I have to get my parent or guardian to do that for me?
The parent or guardian, if you're a minor, if you're eighteen or over, you could do it yourself.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? I thought I heard. Yes.
Yeah, I wanted to say some of these questions were answered in the policy, if you read it thoroughly. So I appreciate the thoroughness that you all have been putting to, taking consideration these questions. Yes.
Thank you so much. Anything further? Okay, on the motion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. We now go all the way to 7E, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, Performance-Based Plan between Phoenix Union High School District, number two, two-hundred-ten, and Thea L. Andrade, Ms. Andrade.
And at the last board meeting, they, you had an opportunity per my contract to revisit the performance-based pay plan for this upcoming school year, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And if that was met by June thirtieth, then it can go into effect. So that is why it was amended onto this agenda. It is basically the contractual amount from my contract, which I believe is fifteen percent. And it is outlined in the board documents to be just evenly distributed over the board goals. Again, the board goals are somewhat in draft form right now, and I believe there's five. If I'm, four, sorry. But there could be five, or there could be three. It is still gonna go out to the community for feedback. And so again, you want to have that latitude within the plan. I believe the plan specifies that no matter what, when the board goals are adopted, you have it so that it's equally distributed among each goal. The goal has to be made for each percentage to be earned, and half the percentage will be earned if there is progress made. However, if it's stagnant or no progress made, nothing is earned on that board goal. Are there any questions around the plan that was put together?
Madam Chair. Superintendent Andrade, just help me, so say we had five goals instead of four. Each goal would be worth three percentage points.
Correct.
And then if you're making progress towards that goal, you get one and a half percentage points towards your?
Correct.
Okay. And then I guess the question is, I, I think, I, I'm gonna support this tonight, but I think I'd be interested in having a conversation at a board retreat with, once we have more focus into student outcomes-focused governance, and we get closer to adopting formal goals, in that making progress category, I, I think maybe next year, you know, I think there's some degrees of
Increments.
Of increments of making progress that I think we should consider. So that's my only comment.
And again, in the absence of knowing what those increments could be, it's hard to do. But I'd be open to adjusting those because I think there is a difference if, if the progress is, I don't know, four percent, and you move a percent, that's different than moving three percent or three and a half percent, and I recognize that.
Anything further? Questions, comments? Okay. Is there a motion to approve Item 7E as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Clerk Oliver and seconded by Representative Marquez. Is there any discussion? On the motion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
One abstention, motion carries. Item 8A, Requests for Future Agenda Items. Members, are there any items you would like to recommend to be considered for future board meeting agendas?
Madam President, I, again, I would just respectfully request that we review and address some of the concerns that was brought up by one of the members of the public here regarding school safety. I do think it is appropriate discussion, especially as quickly as possible before the school, before the school year gets in too full swing soon, that we have this discussion. Again, I know it's been discussed before, but I do believe it's appropriate time to discuss again. I would appreciate if we can have it on an agenda item.
Any further items?
I would like, I think it would be helpful for Mr. Cotta if he's had more context to all the discussions that we've had. So if you all can send a couple of the presentations we had previously where we discussed school safety, I think that would help him as he gets adjusted to the board.
Thank you.
Yeah, the live streams also, to the videos.
Okay. Any further items?
Madam President.
Yes.
Kind of a future agenda item, more a point of personal privilege, I do think we should do something to celebrate the work that our chief financial officer has made to the district, and appreciate sharing all of your guidance that you've given me during my time on the school board. And I, I will miss you, I think all of us will miss your, your guidance, but I know we're, we're in good hands, and, and thank you for everything that you've done for Phoenix Union.
Thank you, Representative Marquez.
Madam President, Ms. Elia, I've said this before and I'll say it again, I've sat with many chief financial officers. You are one of the best that I have ever seen. You have broken it down Barney-style so that even people like me can understand what we're looking at when we look at all the numbers. And I just wish you the best, and know that you are greatly appreciated.
Anything further?
I do want to comment that I'm gonna miss seeing all her unique brooches. So she has some really cool brooches.
Yes, Ms. Elia. I, I know we've had this conversation, it's like, please don't go, but recognize that you have to go. And, and I just want to just reiterate, just the, just the gratefulness that I've had as a board member and the financial transparency, the able, the, the ability to break it down and talk the talk to somebody that doesn't have a financial background, and then just the confidence that I have. Even though we ask our questions, and I feel like as a board, we do our due diligence to make sure that everything is adding up as, as, as far as we can tell, but you've done an amazing job well beyond any of our tenure on, on this board. So thank you very much. We're very grateful for your service, and we're, we're gonna miss you a lot. Anything else? All right. I, I'd like to take a point of privilege, just to lift up that this is Pride Month. And I've always been extremely appreciative of PXU as a community rooted in acceptance, belonging, and just the unwavering support of our LGBT students, staff, faculty, and families. I've witnessed this in person with our, with our, I forget what it's called now, I had it written down, our, our, our own student conference that very much centers on the, our LGBT students with workshops, with wonderful games, and lunches, and, and, and speakers, and just, you know, want to keep that energy going because in, regardless of the political environment that we find ourselves in, mental health and just the wellness of our LGBT students is primary. And I just, I'm, I'm so thankful to be in this community where, where we are just living our values, a strong, vibrant learning environment for our students, and the fact that they can be their authentic selves, and they are, they know that they're valued, they're seen, and they're celebrated. And so just lifting that up to our PXU community, thank you so much for all that you do, our, our LGBT partners, and our, and our club leaders, just thank you so much. And our legal team for going out there and also letting our students know what their, what their rights are. Board Member Pastor Rivera.
Board Member Napa, as someone a part of the LGBTQ community, I want to say thank you for uplifting that, but if I may, I'll also like to say a few things myself. This pride has taken on a new meaning, not only for the pride of being a member of the LGBT community, but given the recent days, the recent headlines, the recent news, the pride of being a Chicano, a sixth-generation Mexican-American. You know, for some time before I came out, I did struggle with my identity. I've been forcibly outed, neglected by family members whose only job it was to love me, and turned down by friends. And now we're facing a government whose actions are making it uncomfortable for people who look like me, for people who speak the same language as my family, for people who have a similar immigration history. But in this emotional turmoil, there's also some lightness, some inspiration. You see, I realize that the foundation of feeling love lies within loving yourself. By cultivating self-love, we unlock the ability to extend love and encouragement to others, empowering them to embrace their own worth, identity, and truth, while also in some way forgiving those who don't want to accept us, for who we love, for where we come from, for what language we speak.
I'm so sorry, Board Member Pastor Rivera, we, we have to stop this because it's not noticed.
Okay, perfect.
Sorry.
No worries, no worries.
Could I lift up a program from our district in relation?
We, we really can't go into comments at this point, yeah. I apologize.
Okay. Any further agenda items? All right. Our last item is 8B, Motion to Adjourn. Is there a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
I motion.
Second.
A motion to adjourn has been made by Board Member Cota and seconded by Representative Marquez. On the motion, those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The special meeting is adjourned.